We're going to call the regular meeting of the Plank Township Board of Trustees for May 26th to order. Will everybody stand and join the stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. The passing drought. The agenda is before the borders. Are there any additions or deletions by fellow board members or staff?
Concerns with trustees, just got speeding, traffic on the road. Yeah, you know, we can do it that way.
Be sure it's your board. On Grove and where?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna add something under zoning, even though Lisa's not here tonight, but I'm gonna add 1905 Red Coach Northwest.
Anything else in changes?
Yeah, it's not here. Okay, then the agenda will stand with the two changes. First order of business tonight is the sheriff's report. Does anybody in the audience have any concerns specifically for the sheriff? Okay, if not, we'll turn it over to Mr. Hawes.
Guys, we know, we know what the story is with Grove. Next, McDonald's is one, and I literally just had a conversation with a president tonight on my way here to the meeting, you know, outside of township, issues of hey, vacate, blocking off the road, concerns still with speeding up and down the street, folks using it as a cut through. I said, you know, we can't sit here and gauge who can or cannot use those roads. But speeding's an issue, and then there's been more frequently since the weather's broke, four-wheelers. I didn't get the house number off the guy, I forgot too. He's probably up from Market. I think it's either six or seven houses on the left-hand side, but he was noting, he's got neighbors that have four-wheelers that run at the middle of the night, you know, they'll run up and down the road a couple times. It's one of those where essentially by the time we get a call to sheriff, they're already back home, so it's something to do a little cognizant of. I asked them, you know, recording, you know, with camera phones and stuff, is that something you guys are able to use, or do you have to catch them for firsthand?
We need to catch them.
You do? Okay. Outside of four-wheelers, the speeding's a big thing. The traffic count, I've already talked to Joe, we're gonna like set the speed buggy back out there again, not only engage speed, but as well, traffic count, we'll figure out logistically how to address an issue Joe had last night. So, I just want the record to reflect that I can commit it and set it in the PDL record, so.
We'll get some extra patrols out there, sir.
Thank you.
Just for the, you know, correct, is there any accidents over there on Grove and Market with McDonald's, is that? Anything popping up over there?
I'm not familiar with anything, yes, sir.
Okay, 'cause it's turning, no, it's only matter of time. It's turning into a demolition derby over there.
I do know there's some make-careous traffic just from actually running out running, whether it's earlier in the morning, midday, or something, it's definitely.
People turning left or into that places, making people go away around, they're going through the grass and the dirt over their walls, you can get around the cars. It was only a matter of time before something's going to happen over there. I was just wondering if anyone was out there yet. Okay, then we'll close the sheriff's report. Nothing on our unfinished business, we'll go to new business. First item on the agenda is medical press.
I'm sorry. Or Lisa asked me to.
We got our interim administrator interim zoning slash.
I'm not zoning. I gotta do something. I had a number one as a resolution to pay medical press for the printing of the 2015 Plank Township summer newsletter in an amount of $3,000.
So moved.
Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution to pay the United States Postal Service for postage for the summer 2015 newsletter in an amount to exceed $3,000.
So moved.
Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to enter in an attached memorandum of agreement between Stark County Health Department and Plank Township for the speed of spray at a rate of $31 per gallon.
So move on to business three.
Second, final question, Joe, did Lisa happen to make any note when we paid last year? It doesn't seem drastically different much.
I think it's the same. Because I know they.
They didn't tell me she was adding this, so I didn't give a fuck for this stuff.
Yeah, there was a small increase added last year, it's looking like it's the same to me. I was saying that it was 30. Um, not sure. It was 30 or 31, but. Stay inside, because you're in your backyards. Huh? It's very dry right now.
Just jinxed us.
Further discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Conclude the new business, we'll go to fiscal officer's report, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is a request for a resolution to authorize the payment of the penny warrants in an amount of $269,688.64 is attached.
So moved. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number two is a request for a resolution to authorize the payment of regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number three is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the payment of the following medical claims provided by All Care.
So moved for debate. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number four is the investment report, as well as the reconciliation from April.
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm just looking at the bank for reconciliation, that's my first add.
Fiscal officer number five is a request for a resolution to authorize the appropriation of the funds as certified by Stark County Auditor from the amended certificate.
So moved. Second, discussion. Any other questions on here? The 11B U cash authority contracts, why is that number so high?
That's the, that's essentially the new levy money that are in for the loan from the levy that we initially wanted to get when we did the budget, so now we've received some of those in with the amended certificate, now allocating those to cover the contracts that we passed there as part of this video.
Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number six is a request for a resolution to authorize the following transfers. So moved.
Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number seven, it's a request for a resolution to enter into the agreement of CareWorks, CareWorks Conference, formerly the Frank Gates Service, for the, basically the administration of Bureau of Workers' Comp.
So moved. Second, discussion. Just to record as a resolution, right, by going within this, we'll save the township $29,000 on the, you know, cost. Can we roll call?
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number eight, this is a request for a resolution by the board to purchase a new YCOM, it's an electronic signature for the checks, as well as a new print from FNE.
So moved. Second, discussion.
This is, we did, briefly filling in on this, we purchased one in 2004, and then the last one we purchased was 2008, with some current issues. It's pretty outdated equipment, so this is to give a newer version, it's more software-oriented, which will give us more options going forward as far as our current options, whatever the word may be.
Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And then fiscal officer number nine is a request for a resolution to authorize the release of insurance proceeds that were retained after a fire back on September 30th, 2014, at 3:18 Thunderbird Circle, in an amount of $11,000.
So moved. We're gonna pay. So moved. Roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And that will conclude the fiscal officer portion of the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. So, nothing on the administrator's report, we'll go to the fire department, and we have Chief Schallberger here.
I just have one item tonight. A motion here to extend an offer of employment to Scott Yan for the position of career firefighter program medic, contingent upon success that week, creating township's medical physical examination.
So moved. Second, discussion.
This is just, this was the next name on the list for our discussion last meeting.
Yeah, that was our candidate, that was eligible.
Let me ask you a question, because I know you're pretty thorough when you guys go through these processes, because our process is too lengthy, because it seems like these people are getting offered employment at other agencies while we're going through ours.
Well, they, they kind of a rash in hiring for county, city camp just hired a few, last one hired three, you know, a lot of the people are in the same pool taking tests for multiple agencies, so we just had a couple on our list that, you know, at the same time we were offering positions, they were offering positions, so, but it's timing a lot of times, you know, who gets the call first, they take it.
If you recall, we redid that just before John, before Chief said that last, and it became, it came, it went from kind of not as thorough to a very thorough, I think, process. Well, I know you want to make sure that, you know, your eyes are on, your jeans are crossed, just want to make sure that we're not losing out on some quality candidates that are going to other agencies, because maybe.
Well, sometimes, you know, we take the trustee meetings and, you know, get them, you know.
Maybe we can meet sooner as a board when it comes to hiring things, we can have special meetings or something like that, to speed up the process.
And that's where we're gonna look to both you and Chief Snyder, Chief Snyder, to make that, make that recommendation, and the person might, you know, raise caliber, or the department are following the standard, as long as we're trying to keep the essence.
I see that.
It's just we gotta make sure we give media proper, proper certification, so.
If that helps, I mean, that can speed it up.
Yeah, that would, and, you know, and obviously it's got, I think, for some reason there just needs to be a rash of hiring in our area, so, you know, the last couple months here.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
That closes the fire department.
Thank you, chief. We're gonna go to the road department report, Joe, just turn your hand around.
Mr. President, I could just, we've got public here.
That's right, 6:15, it's about to right there. Thank you. We're going to go to the 6:15 PM Hollydale Lane District. Here we have, I'm gonna turn that over to our fiscal officer, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public hearing for Hollydale Lane District, it's in current, the lights are all there currently, there's heat lights currently on that street, they're just built to individual property owners. This is the great district, I've looked at essentially the whole of the township, and then we assess the property taxes, so, creating a district for lights that are already on.
So this is just that small stretch of Hollydale.
I believe this is a straight stretch out, it encompasses some of the residents, but it's just the lights right down, I think between, is that East and Schneider?
Is anybody present?
Yeah.
For Hollydale? Yes, sir. Give your name and address for the fiscal officer.
Okay, it's Chester Stromsky, 6120, Hollydale, northeast. Those lights are run from Grove down to Schneider.
Okay.
And they're all on the west side of the street.
All right, Anthony, was there?
Yeah, everything was set out, and I think we have one, maybe one resident that didn't, didn't get service on a certain occasion, but they obtained enough signatures and then proceeded to accept it.
All right, is there anybody present wishing to speak against the lighting district? Okay, I will move the follow, move adoption of the lighting district for Hollydale between Schneider and Grove. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And then we'll close the hearing.
May I ask a question first?
Yes, sir.
What's the process from here, now that this has been approved?
Basically, from here, once it's approved, AEP will transfer, currently those lights are billed to individual residents, I think you collect amongst the neighbors, basically what they'll do is they'll transfer them to the township, they'll actually build the township, and the auditor will assess the individual property owners, and that the equal share of the fees for this lighting.
Okay, what, when, what's the timeframe on, on that process?
That doesn't take, that doesn't take very long to happen, I think basically they'll have to, they'll be up to AEP on their side as to when they change it over, so they'll have that final bill for those residents, and then they'll start as of today's date, put them to the township, so.
Great.
Thank you. Go to the road department, Mr. Icene.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one, we opened up our payment bids last week, and here's what some contractors got bid on it, costs. Actually, asphalt came down $4.45 a ton last year.
It's because of what?
We went from 8.06 miles last year to 15.5 miles a year to make a bid. Residents asking our length?
How much, almost about?
15.5, so 15 and a half miles.
It's more of almost doubling this year.
Almost double last year.
Nice.
So as you can see, the bids are very close, $4,703.12, $1.22, that's pretty good on a contract that big.
Yeah, that wasn't that much more than I was.
Yeah, there's, there's reasons that, for the offer of stuff that we're dating, so it's hard.
Item number two, it's a resolution to award the 2015 Plank Township paving and rubber repair project in application of hot mix 448 asphalt to Central Ally as the lowest and responsible bidder. So moved. Second, Mr. Lino, discussion, it's a record, and it's about, looks to be about $600,000 more than what we spent last year, the additional miles.
Yes.
Roll call. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, we weren't quite sure, Anthony and I, when that money was gonna start coming in, so I didn't want to get, you know, and have to start padding streets and stuff like that, I didn't want to do that, so we tried to keep it as low as we can. We did almost double our, and hopefully next year we know what we got coming in, and we can continue to increase that.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number three, the resolution by the Plank Township Board of Trustees to authorize the execution of a contract in Central Ally for 2015 paving and rubber repair project.
So moved. Second, discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number four is a letter we received from Regional Planning Commission, we received a grant to do the brickhead and store, store face two project of $137,025. This, we need to hire IDI to do the, what is it, I wonder? Okay, so this is the grant we're getting, for 137, and next meeting we'll have the resolution to get the plans all completed.
Yes.
Here's the contract that the board has to sign.
Yeah. Item number five.
Item number five is a resolution to authorize the payment to Worshipful Brothers Landscaping for April 2015, for composting in an amount not to exceed $2,323.50, that's our current site.
So moved. Item number five. Second, discussion, hearing done, roll call please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Icene. Move to the zoning department, and our law director, here we'll.
We have for you nuisance payments 1A through 1F, that's outlined on your agenda.
So move on zoning, 1A through F.
Second, discussion. The Andrew Plank, that's the previous one.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number two is just simply one nuisance payment at 30 seconds.
So move on, zoning 2A.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
As far as what we're still under, there's only, I know Lisa's not here, but it was safe to the record, immediate future follow-up, starfire gas station on North Market, again, there's actually, when I was up to Mass this past weekend, there's a downed light hole just rusting in the parking lot, the grass is getting, the grass is getting high, I know we're still working that option through the county commissioners and the state on how the state's going after the owner, who owns multiple starfires, those poor residents are already dealing with nothing, seeing that level of high grass, down, I'm gonna say, disconnected, moment, shape or form, light hole, and then immediately, just to the east of us, the McDonald's, I know most of it's asphalt, but the rest of the grass is getting to the point where it's not presentable, we don't need to think about it again before what we're already dealing with, lots of that back there.
Make sure I say some things to you tomorrow, and also get a hot list ready for.
Yeah, and Mr. Hall.
You've got three or four we can think of, certainly.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, we actually have a decent enough record in there to who the repeat offenders are. You know, a perfect example is Roland Ridge. Why do we have to wait for a resident to call and remind us about Roland Ridge? We know what the situation is over there, but again, we waited until the grass was two feet high before.
Okay, good, I'll follow up.
And here's another one, it's a repeat offender, I know that somebody was out there, Rob, I don't know if you were out, in, on Red Coach, took the picture, somebody was out and taking pictures on Red Coach.
I can't recall if it was me or not, but I think it took quite a few of us to ask a job.
I did a phone call today, and it has been going on over there with this house for years, a vacant abandoned house over there.
Where's that?
The address is 1905 Red Coach.
Oh, that's the one, I've got that down, too.
And, you know, the previous owner, I mean, the current owner, the home, has been made aware by the neighbors, because they've contacted us several times, but still, there's no action taken, and the things of concern is the pictures, if you look at these pictures, the roof of this place is collapsing.
Just come in about noon today.
Okay.
But this is another house that we, that's been a repeat offender, that again, we're waiting for somebody to call and complain about again, and.
Right.
There's no excuse for it, but what I'd like to do is see if we can get the, the fire department to look at this house structure, we.
Sure.
The porch is no different than the house on Market Avenue that we had read off, but, you know, if there was some health department issues, I think we should contact the health department also to get that going.
Chuck, for your reference, that address is 1905 Red Coach Road.
Yeah, I actually stopped there today, on my way here, and, it's a porch on the back with that area, the main roof is solid, but that's like an overhang, that kind of porch area there, it's all rotten at the bottom, it's got electric, got gas to it, there's mail coming to the house, looks, I mean, there's, there's stuff blown, and I don't know who's living or not living there, but.
Well, the owner lived, at least got out at one point to a nephew, since it's late, and, I mean, but a good example was, somebody's holding a tape measure up, and the grass was 27 inches tall.
Yeah.
Takes a long time for the grass to get 27 inches. Pretty soon it's gonna be laying down like wood. Everybody have anything else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Zoning Director, Mr. Law Director, go to Parks Department, Mr. Snyder.
Item number one, gentlemen, is a resolution to authorize payment to Miller &amp; Company for the extra portage, John, it's not to exceed $3,000 from 14A, 08A for services during the May lacrosse tournament this weekend.
So moved. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number two is just a simple recap, our, our first lacrosse tournament two weeks ago, things went really pretty well on the whole, and our two deputies that were there were excellent, and helped keep control of the parking lots, which is a huge help to those of us inside the facility, and even to be able to do without them, so the meeting went really well, I think our deputies played a major role in that, so, we'll look forward to another good weekend, coming up with lacrosse, and button up that season, and just a reminder, Supermarket is June 1st, from 5:00 to 7:30 each, we did have to cancel the last one with the implement, while they're rolling through, to the dismay of many, but we'll be back on June 1st.
I was gonna say, I was a bit hungry that night because of what.
I tell ya, we gotta do what we gotta deal.
I think just on the event recap, Lieutenant Springer, your folks did, did a great job. I know I rolled, I rolled in, just need to drop off some of our stuff.
Actually, I know I rolled, I rolled in, just need to drop off some recitals, and, let's just say, the incompetence of, you know, some folks in the public to understand when there's a cruiser with flashing lights and it's gated off saying closed, that it's actually closed, it's not, there's still optional parking happening there, so this is a brace for some of those folks get, even when folks are trying to be nice. Keep everything orderly and right, right up, so.
Agreed.
Make sure you really answer the deputies, dude.
I've already told those two, I hope they request again, for the record, Debbie Blackstock and Debbie Davis. Outside of that, I just wanna make the public aware, Alpine Park, um, the track will be paved and the parking lot will be re-strengthened on Monday, June 1st, so we will indeed be closing Alpine for that day, uh, with asphalt to settle and lines to dry, so we'll be putting signs up, and we'll send the fresh ways out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you, that's all.
Great, Mr. President, Law Director, just one, there's all, I know.
Communications is on, we need to communicate. Some given from Stark Soil and Water Conservation District, they wanted to let us know, and the public to know, that they're hosting a rain barrel and rain garden workshop. It's gonna be, let's see, they're having it until June 11th, 6 to 8, at the USBA Service Center in Ridgell Drive, near the RG Bridge School. And it's a $55 registration fee, which includes all the supplies any participants will need to make and take home, as they say, their very own rain barrel, so, they sent that to us, so we pass it along.
Perfect. I think we still have a couple of examples out there, so.
I think it's all about ours, they're real nice, too.
Yeah.
We're now to the, uh, portion of public speaks, if anybody in the audience have anything or concerns? Sign the ground. Our concerned trustees, we moved, certain fiscal officer, Mr. Flex?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll go to the approval of the means of 12, 2015, I will move their options.
Second.
Discussion, hearing on the roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes. There is a need for an executive session, be hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Island, during executive session at 6:33 PM from this regular meeting of May 26, 2015, is authorized under a revised code 12122G for purposes and consideration of 1A, appointment of a public employer official, employment of a public employer official, 1B, 1F, compensation of a public employer official, and 4, preparing for, conducting, reviewing negotiations or bargaining searches with public employees.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.